Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Deirdre.
Hello, hi. Barry for you?
Sorry, we're just setting up the livestream.
No worries, on the way, thank you.
Recording in progress.
Thank you.
Good evening. What's the browser? We logged it on Facebook on normally?
I don't want to log on Facebook here, maybe you could try Google Chrome, because you're on...
Well, I say good last then.
The is an enhancement to what I'm sure will be, I'm sure will be, we need to do, you know, say something along those lines and reference to any.
Apologies, folks, we should have this wrapped up shortly in terms of the tech stuff. I don't.
You don't need.
I don't think we need it for this, we would if we were doing a land use action. There we go. You good? All right. Let me just turn the host capability back over to you. Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
Apologies for the delay. I am not our treasurer, who is on her way and has been delayed, but I am, my name is Barry Weinberg, I am the first vice chair of the community board. And I also chair the community board strategic planning committee, which this year has also taken on some of the responsibilities of compiling our district aid statement and our budget items in coordination with the rest of the committees of the board. So, that being said. Hi Joyce. It would be helpful, I think, if you went around the room and just introduced ourselves as well.
So, with that said, good evening, everyone who's here. My name is Malik Harden Cordera, I'm second vice chair. And I also sit on a number of our committees and I happen to co-chair the cannabis task force, so.
I was reading down, I'm the co-chair of economic development and the West Palm here.
I'm Mr. Swift, I do me, I'm also the co-chair of economic development and.
Hi, my name is Sophia Alford, I'm a student.
Wonderful, welcome.
Hi, I'm an Augustan Claire, an Apple student.
Welcome.
I'm Lester Sun, I'm their editor.
Excellent.
Well, I'm also a Columbia student, my name is Michaelie Blasis, I sit on both the economic development chair as well as.
Hi, my name is Laquita Henry, and I co-chair help environment committee.
Hi, my name is Iris Hershinghorn, and. Not a Columbia student, I'm just a community member, I've been in a couple of agencies in the past.
Wonderful, welcome. For folks on the Zoom, we'll get to Deirdre when she gets here, but we want to just go across very quickly. We don't have that many, well, we have 13 people on, but maybe starting with Nina and then Alana. You should be able to unmute.
Nina Tally.
Also, do you ever hit show captions?
Hi, good evening. My name is Nina Tally, and I am a steward for the Edgecombe Avenue Garden Park Sanctuary, which is located across from Jackie Robinson Park, between 145th and 150th in Edgecombe.
Great. Alana?
Hi, Alana Mercado, I'm on the housing committee and also the arts and culture committee, and I've been on the board since 2017.
Great. Carolyn, do you want to go next? Or Shanika? Karen?
All right, hi, I just introducing myself, I'm Shanika Wilson, on community board nine, I serve as a co-chair of youth education libraries committee, and I've been on the board since, I believe, 2017. Good evening, everyone.
Evening, evening. Karen?
Hi, good evening, I'm Karen Azner, I act as the president of the Friends of St. Nicholas Park.
Wonderful. Liliana Pena?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Okay, hi, my apologies. I'm attending this meeting, I live in the community, it's my first time actually attending. I will be in attendance on Thursday promoting my business and sharing my services and everything that I'm doing for the community on Thursday. And I'm here just showing support and getting some information on what's going on in this meeting.
Awesome, thank you. Heather?
Heather Jason, co-chair landmarks preservation and parks committee.
Great. Nick Porter? Baldwin for Nick Porter, and that? Can they hear us?
Yes, I can hear you, did even everyone welcome, I'm Annette Robinson, committee member of housing land use and zoning and new co-chair with Heather of landmarks preservation and parks.
Great. And then, and Tanika James? Oh, and there's Sharon.
Hi, good evening, my name is Esnica James, I'm the community liaison for the tennis program at Housing Works, so we have an office in a clinic located at 122nd and Park at Bailey House, and we offer free therapy and case management services for Harlem community members. So I'm just here to support, get more information, and also to increase our visibility with the Harlem community. We service adults 18 and over.
Great, thank you. And Sharon Dela Cruz?
Hi, everyone, Sharon Dela Cruz, I'm in the arts and culture and youth education and libraries committee.
Great, I think that's everybody. So, I'm going to kick this off until Deirdre gets here. And I'm going to start by sharing my screen and walking us through the process a little bit. So, what we're looking at is the FY 2023, so it's a bit outdated now, but it gives you a sense of the document, list of budget requests that we submitted to the office of management and budget. Since would have been submitted in October 2020. One. Yes. And this is the output of portal that we interact with and submit our requests to. It also lists the agency budget contacts for each of the agencies covered by the office of management and budget. And then, we go through our budget register with our capital budget priorities, which are things, projects that we think in the district that should be funded. And these projects are capital projects, which means they are buildings or rehabilitations to parks. They are physical, frequently bricks and mortar projects. There are certain other exceptions, but by and large, the easy rule of thumb for dividing expenses, for dividing budgeting into capital and expense is if it's physical and brick and mortar, it's a capital project. If it's a staff person, it's an expense line, and we can get into nuances there if we need to. But then, you'll see that we have a priority code here, which tells them this is our highest priority. We have project information, and then there will be a tracking code if this is a new or if this is a request that comes from a previous year. So. Writ large, our process here seeks to identify the biggest priorities for our district in both expense and capital. And then, we will go through and rent them here tonight, take any new suggestions or admissions, and then we will compile them and submit them to the office of management and budget at the end of this process. So, give me one moment. Let me pull up our FY 24 register. Who in here has been to one of these before? Laquita, I know a bunch of people here have. Karen has, so who, who is, for who is this their first budget hearing? Great. Well, I'm glad you came, it's always good when we have more participation in these rather than less. Now this will work. So. These are not the right. So, you'll see that actually the first item did not change, it's affordable housing requests. We then have technology upgrades for schools, and then the 147th Street project that would create affordable housing at the RKO Hamilton space. And then, specific investment for a new school facility for Columbia Secondary School for Math, Science, and Engineering. And then, we have some transportation requests, housing for seniors, the marine transfer station. And then, senior citizen homeowner assistance program for energy efficiency upgrades. So those are the first eight or nine capital items from last year. I wanted to first start by asking if any of the committee co-chairs or committee members here had submissions for new lines for this, this current process.
I think we could possibly add assistance as opposed to come under HAC for the M. Bowen, I'm sure they're going to need some money for moving back. A bit of baggage to the new location, I'm sure, for funding, but I don't know how they grasp of that, but also here to help there because they are, you know, being relocated, and I'm sure they're going to need some capital funding, that's kind of.
Yeah, we're on capitals now for build out, maybe?
Build out for sure, at, let's say, at 1649 Amsterdam.
Well, that's heritage, yeah.
And then, build out, well, you know, I'm not sure how long M. Bowen will be at 135th, but I'm sure there's going to be some funding needed there, even if it's temporary and definitely coming back. We just don't know, having that of that project, but even right now, I'm sure there's something that's needed.
Healthcare space at 16.
1649 for heritage health care. Yes, and, let's see, I'll say heritage, and even though ophthalmology will be there, I don't think that they are giving funding, but heritage does, soon as they. This is just kind of unexpected on them, I'm sure that I need something.
Okay.
And I, well, actually, I had it under expenses, but then, again, I wasn't anticipating this so much, but the Charles B. Rangel Center, I'm thinking about our major health care centers, probably something.
Yeah. Well, I am going to very happily turn this over to you once you get settled. But so, do we know of anything that the Charles B. Rangel Center needs?
I think of the four top ones in our district, the Charles B. Rangel Center, Heritage Health Care,
Where is the Thelma Adair Center?
You know what, I think they're split, neither at 124, between St. Nicholas and.
Are you talking about the Ryan, the Ryan Center, where, where's, where?
Well, they may be part Ryan.
Yeah, where Sidemam was.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
And I was in, Charles has, has come to our committee meeting, asking for support at various times. I'm sure they need something, I can see more time between May, open the 31st. See whatever it is, with a couple of them, it may not be capital, it could be experience.
Okay, so, just as Deirdre gets settled in, I'll turn the reins over to her. But Laquita referenced October 31st, which is the deadline by which the community board must submit our budget priorities. So that's why that date is relevant. And so, Deirdre, we just started open the floor to new capital or expense items that any of the committees wanted to put on the sheet before we started ranking this thing.
Are we dealing with just capital, welcome, capital and? We normally deal with both, we'll do like one to 10 from capitals and one to 10 for expense. If timing permits, we'll try to get to as much as we can.
Great. I think one thing that is important that we are not really focusing on, but the economic developments is what you're saying on, is that it puts itself in culture and the arts and driving the economy of a community. We know downtown, you know, the economy is great because of the arts and the cultural programs that go on. You know how much money the city makes from tourism, people who come to, yes, to watch the shows and, you know, engage in the cultural program that we have in the city. In our district, we need to really focus on supporting cultural industry, the cultural industry, and. And I, we were thinking about the Montefiore Park. It will solve the problem that we have illicit activity. If we could help to turn that place into a place for vendors, as well as a space for programming performances. So I believe that the Montefiore Park would need some type of capital funding, and then also the expense funding to support cultural, the cultural industry in this community. Because, as you can see, as we have this very special, the food festival and that festival, it brings people into our community. The businesses, they need foot traffic. I know, so this is what these cultural events do, they bring foot traffic to these very small businesses. That's what we need to help us, small businesses, and so we need to support the cultural arts, we need to find a way of kind of finding for whatever structure needs to be started at the Montefiore Park to encourage cultural programming there.
Do you know? Before we get there, because I know we have Karen Azner from St. Nicholas Park, Joyce, I just had a question for you. Is that a department cultural affairs thing, or is it a small business services or?
It can go both ways, it can go both ways, you know, EDC.
I would also say DPR. And it's not a park, it's a playground, just so folks know, it's Hamilton Place and 138th Street.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's square, sorry. I stand corrected, I'm sorry, that's the square. It is a park. And that's Broadway, Hamilton Place and West one thirty eighth street.
Broadway and Hamilton.
That's from one thirty seven to one thirty.
One thirty six to one thirty eight, triangle.
A triangle. So we're on parks and we're not on housing preservation anymore.
So E C A would need to increase funding for the arts organization in our district. And we know we have a lot of artists in that issue. Anybody?
But even those arts and cultures, we're looking at from economic development. Cause you're not having that.
Economic development cuts across every.
No, no, I mean, I'm just saying, they're staying in arts, like, that's why I want to make sure we hear it's part of the economy. Cause arts have their own community you need to deal with.
Where the mama? We cut across everyone. We didn't know.
Yeah. Too much money to get none. I'm very specific. So we got reason, so we know.
I don't see anybody's hand up on Zoom, F Y I.
What are we doing? You know, just talking about different things. We build capital for capital. Capital.
So I'm on the job training, okay?
Um, great to know. I, I'm thinking in terms of our St Nicholas Park and under health, under. For Department of Homeless Services with the parks, we, in last year's budget, wanted them to focus, put a focus on the. Free block radius around Montefiore Park and other hotspots, but identify there, I think we need to add very specifically St Nicholas Park to that. Because it seems there's an increase in homelessness. And I believe when we did this. Maybe last year, it may not have seemed that way so much, but there. There are a lot of little makeshift tents overnight, no sleep.
Encampments.
Area encampments and St Nicholas Park now, again, at one point there was, but now it seems as if. Again, so it was an, it is an expense item in this current budget, but I'm going for it. I think we should add in. St Nicholas Park. We have it in now. Before, you know, October thirty first, I didn't.
Karen. I just wanted to, it's okay if you can hear me. I just wanted to chime in and, and, you know, voice agreement. We have had an uptick. In the park in terms of encampments. You know, it's a complicated issue though, because they do regularly go through the legal process to remove them and they're very. Entrenched and they return almost immediately. So, you know. It is a challenge, right? So, you know, funding may help to some degree, but it's, you know, it's really finding the right solution for some of those. But I just wanted to mention that it's related to one of the priorities that is on the capital budget, which is the closed set of stairs. Just south of the plaza, because that is a place where we have. Recidivist encampments, including Ivy drug users currently in that part of the park. And there, again, it's very difficult to remove them from that location. Because those stairs are closed and it creates this whole sort of corridor of, of kind of. Remote. You know, and, and not a very, not a very welcoming part of the park for anyone else in the park.
Karen, Laquita and everyone, when you witness those encampments, it's very important that you contact the district office. Because we have a unit within D S S that addresses that. And at my cabinet meeting every month. My liaison asks me, do I know of any encampments? We have not received any complaints, so I don't know. Right. So in the future, please just keep me alerted. And I can report it and they can continuously send out the units. And after a while, I know you said they're right back. But if it's ongoing and repetitive, they'll get tired of being removed. So just let, no.
Yeah, yeah, I will. I always let Matt Jenrich, the district manager, know right away. And I mean, I talk to him regularly all the just. And, and this one in particular, which is on the upper path, I mean, he's been removed from this park at least a dozen times over the last three years, if not more.
You're talking about the parks district manager?
Yeah, exactly. And he's very responsible. And this person, for example, was just removed. He was evicted legally again last week and he's back. He's, he's just really difficult situation, but I'm happy to keep everyone in the loop and apply.
I, I think Youth, Youth's rep from D H S also, we have a, we have an outreach consortium uptown. That has, that is contracted by the city to do outreach to attempt to convince and connect homeless folks with. Resources, including shelters, other services, you know, mental health and substance abuse services. So it's not just the legal eviction process, but it's also the relationship building.
Yeah, one hundred percent. And these folks have been offered services, the current, the current two or three that are in there numerous times. It's just, that's why I'm just saying it's, those resources have been utilized. I'm happy to keep everyone informed. But these particular ones right now are really, really challenging.
And we had something similar in St. John Devan. About a year or two ago about the encampments and they were going back and forth. So finally we did get them removed. I guess they, I guess they got tired of being displaced.
Yeah, yeah, we, we had folks under the via, under the overpass, I guess, of Riverside Drive and one thirty eighth street.
Yes.
And eventually, eventually enough of them were convinced to, you know, accept services and go into shelter than kind of the nucleus.
During Vinnie's garden, too. Smoking in, yes. Please down there regularly.
Thank you for that information. I think maybe what I, we can do is add another agency with that, maybe not only Department of Homeless Services. But maybe we could also see our D O H M H maybe and their mental health. Cause it's really challenging and. You know, they, they need. Well. I was, yeah. You know, but anyway, that's why I'm saying they need help. And that's why I'm saying maybe with the funding, we should add in. The Department of.
D O H.
Mental health. And I don't know if they have an outreach area. And also, I, you know, don't know what happened with the police pilot program. With intervention. So that's the third one we could add funding, because I know we were trying to get more funding. Last year with the pilot program, because that having one program just wasn't enough with, you know, one set of. Mental health, mental health professionals. So I think with those three agencies, there's more to it. I, I think they are, they are tough cases.
Certainly won't help that they're closing the mental health center and relocating it and downsizing.
Oh, right. Not here. I think they're witch walking. And I just realized how many parks we have just in our C V. Because I think about the other area on Amsterdam Avenue, that's like an open field across from City College. And then, of course, we have Jackie Robinson. So, I mean, Jackie Robinson. So we have a number of green spaces in our community that we need to. And I'm sure we're all being mindful of and, you know, we want to maintain and make sure that there isn't any illicit activity in all those spaces. People can move about.
Michael has his hand and so does Heather. Michael or not Heather?
Heather? Okay, all right. I couldn't hear very well. Thank you, Karen. And I just wanted to make sure that, that you reiterated any additional. Items that, that, you know, I assume we're just going to continue with the same items as before, but there were a couple of. Things that came up in some of our committee meetings. One was for Jenny's Garden Fence at West one thirty ninth street. That had been damaged since twenty twenty two and there was some type of flooding in twenty twenty one that caused part of the wall. I guess to collapse. So I don't know if that's something that can be added. And, and if anyone is familiar with it, I, I'm not, but I'm just trying to bring additional items that were brought to me. To the hearing. So that's Jenny's Garden Fence at West one thirty ninth street. And then also we've received a lot of complaints or. Concerns about West Harlem Pierce Park Comfort Stations or bathrooms.
They need more funding for. We don't have. Or porta potty, something.
Plating them. Has dedicated for the money that was given to them. Parks have control of it and has not been used for. The West Harlem Fair that was dedicated for. However, we did have part of it used this past summer for two fortifies. That was maintained, but it wasn't extended. I think it was. The night of September, but it really took me technically from May to the end of October, but we haven't done that.
I have a question. Ms. Dunn, do you remember, I've got a briefing, I want to say sometime when they officially opened the Pierce Park. That. There were supposed to be comfort stations there. And they, no, I remember, I don't know if it was Parks or E D C saying that, well, the plumbing situation or whatever didn't permit.
Yes, that, yeah, they could not put permanent plumbing there. I'm sorry, yes. They cannot put permanent plumbing there because they don't have the space in the ground to do what's necessary to put one in. And that's why we've been having. For asking for the porta potties.
But the water source is very close to the park, but E D C did not want to rip the park up. To create the.
It was like. Underneath thing for that.
Yeah, they refused to tear the park. Lost in the shuffle. We never revisited it, but in the beginning, they said they were not tearing that park up again. It was just created, just opening, and we were complaining that why wasn't it? Bought up in the plan. Yeah, that it should have been part of the plans, that they should have thought about a restaurant.
I'll put it on capital then.
Yeah.
We would be asking money for what?
The comfort station at West.
Permanent park. Permanent.
So in. But can we also like through the committee request that next spring, summer, that we have those porta potties in place? So.
Yeah, we're supposed to go back and, and request a period of time to cover the monies. So nineteen, next five years or whatever, because this is about to end and we have not used them.
Until they grant us our request, we should have temporary.
Yeah.
Porta potties.
Because the money is definitely there. Now, I would use the different story, but they're funny. Columbia put that money there and they have misused it in part.
Can we, can we request an audit?
You want to deal with that, Joyce?
So actually, really, it's the point that I want to make. I said, we can make a request to the comptroller. I did take a look at New York City's preliminary budget through the comptroller and. I understand we're talking about smaller capital expenses, but I think there are some very deep concerns. So for example. Between twenty twenty three and, and twenty twenty four, there's going to be. An increase in the budget deficit of the city from one point five billion dollars to seven billion dollars. And that also includes or not includes asylum seekers. So housing for asylum seekers is going to. Double between twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four from eight hundred million dollars to two billion dollars. So I understand that we want to focus on smaller issues potentially, but. I think we should focus on broader areas, especially areas where there's budgetary cuts. So for example, education, patients want to see nearly, nearly dollars spending. Change. Between twenty twenty three and twenty twenty five. I understand that, you know, my original question perhaps was going to say like, hey, what can Congress do? Or what are congressional representatives going to possibly do about the situation, given the fact that this is almost. A ten billion dollar deficit that could potentially affect our community? Wait, what, what, what years? Let's start. Are you using fiscal years or calendar years? So we're in the middle of F Y twenty four. Right. But the city legally cannot run a deficit. I mean, they have accounting ways of. Right. So what they're doing is that they're pulling from. A general reserve and capital stabilization rhythm. So my concern is that as the budget grows, obviously we're going to have to make greater cuts. And I guess one of the points I was just trying to make is that we should focus on areas that are going to be seeing cuts, substantial cuts like education. So when we do get to the youth education part, I would strongly endorse funding for these areas in part because they're going to lose over a billion dollars. For the funding.
So give them higher priority.
Yes, twenty twenty three and twenty twenty five, there's going to be one billion less dollars allocated to education.
Thank you, Mike.
That's something we could definitely hold on to place that at a higher priority.
Just to bring you back a little bit on what I say, yes, we have asylum seekers here, a lot of. But we need to make sure that. Sufficient outreach is done. That would let them know where they need to go for assistance so that they don't just become a burden unnecessarily. Or, or what's the word I'm looking for? I'm trying to be politically correct as well. So that they, they become productive.
Triving to society.
Right. So I know the resources are there, but are they reaching them?
Right.
You know, so I think we need to make sure that.
Training, like training and education.
Making sure that we're getting to that, to let them know that they can't get this. I was at the Borough President's immigrant borough. And he asked a couple of questions. Who needs jobs? Raise their hands. So my question, where, are there no, no, no agencies going to them to help them find jobs, you know?
They're all supposed to be services intact, yeah. At these sites where they have the facility, the homeless facilities.
So is there shortage of personnel or what is going, that's what I'm saying, that maybe some addition of money. Allocated to ensure that these people know where the resources are.
Yeah.
Every time he says it, he says these things are in place.
Really?
What'd you say? Schooling, job placement, training, everything's in place.
Healthcare services.
At the facilities where people are being housed.
And if it's not, they're giving welfare.
Right.
I see people on the train and they're asking, showing addresses and asking how to get there. I've assisted, so. If it's not on the pursuit, there are places that they're advised to go. Now, someone there taking them, unfortunately not, because I've seen them trying to get there.
So are we saying expand resources or expand outreach funding? Where, where are we going?
In my note, I put referral and casework services for migrants.
So increasing those services as well as increasing outreach effort?
Well, so this might be a good time. So everything that we put. In these priorities that get submitted. Should either ideally be tied to a specific program that an agency oversees that's like named. Or a head count for a specific agency, like. We have head count at D S N Y sanitation that, you know, tells us how many trucks and what level of service we get. Or for capital projects is tied to.
Or for capital projects is tied to a specific location or site. Um, and then there are some exceptions to that, which are like our big signal value billboards. To O M B saying like, this is broadly what we think is most important. So affordable housing is a very, very, very diverse concept. Leave it at that, covers a wide variety of programs. It's been our number one for many years, but like, we know they're not funding a specific project based on that. Entry because there is no specific project there, it's. The portal housing. So if you know of any named programs where we should be putting this money to either for migrants or for certain school programs or. Whatever, that's always helpful.
I also want to, sorry, I just also want to name translation services for those. So even if we have the services, the access is usually in translation. Because most migrants right now are speaking like dialects of Spanish. Um, so there's a lot that's lost literally in translation.
Mm hmm. Right in our district here, um, City College, there's citizen now.
Mm hmm.
I deal with um.
Both area and in heights, right?
Yes, they were there at the Borough President's um. Southern.
So it's just a matter of getting outreach. To the facilities, even if they have. In-house services, but there's also outreach that they can go to different sites. Barry, did you mention the proposed uh, shelter coming to our district?
I did not.
CB nine uh, in twenty twenty five? Is looking to have a shelter open at one twenty ninth and Amsterdam.
Well, we are not looking for that, we have been informed by D H S that they are.
Yes, you're right, I I used the wrong term. D H S has informed us that that site will be um. Filled for a homeless shelter for families with children.
But isn't there school?
Eighty four units.
Hmm, aren't there schools right there? Doing ninth and Amsterdam?
Yeah, it's all kind of across the street, I don't think they, it's an empty lot, it's an empty lot.
No, so the lot is between Amsterdam and Convent.
Convent.
Okay.
Right, yeah, because I know it's not this way.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's not on the side of Shelter and Arms, it's across the street.
Okay.
By the buzzy embol.
The answer is Convent.
Yeah.
It was too much. So that's another, my top of what's going to be happening.
Eighty four units. Yeah, that's family.
Yeah, but the children.
You heard that six years ago with child tomorrow.
Right.
And then we eventually. And here we are. Where we. So I just wrote down, under expenses, we have. Uh. Support for cultural industry. Investment for programming, Montefiore Square Park. D H S, Harley, I read St. Nicholas Park, and I also edited the one from last year. Funding for schools, which is very broad, which is okay. But if there's anything in particular, we should list it. Referral and casework services for migrants and translation interpretation service. So that's in my role as scribe, what I've been writing down. That's, those are all expenses.
Sorry, I didn't finish from before, um, but a few other things, I just want to bring um, your attention to the resolution that we did. On the million more trees that asked for um, tree guards and um, the repair of sidewalks and landmarked areas. For um, small owner occupied, including mixed use properties um, for the repair of sidewalks due to tree roots. Um, and I can give you more, um, you know, the verbiage behind that, but we, and they, we also asked for um. Things such as um. Um, not only the protection of trees to sidewalks, um, funding for. Um, I guess stewards of trees. Um, let's see, tree guard sidewalk repair. Um, and we're trying to increase our canopy um, in terms of. Tree plantings in our area. Um.
And pruning.
And pruning, yes, that's also, um, yeah, the stewardship education programs. Um, projects. Ongoing care of the trees in the community, but I have an entire write-up of that from, from the resolution that we made. Um, funding for native tree species was also another one.
So we do have an entry on last year's expense under other street trees and forestry service requests. We've got provide funds needed for pruning trees throughout parks, plazas and community gardens to deter illegal activity. So this is.
But for D O T, we need to expand um, the properties qualifying for free sidewalk repair due to tree root damage.
But ah, that's.
And then the tree guards for, you know, the protection of the, the trees that, that was, um, those were many items that we had in our resolution. For a million more trees. And then there are also, and I know our commu- we have some community gardener people on the line too, and I, I want them to have an opportunity to speak. But we need some increased funding for the community gardening program through Green Thumbs.
Here's an underlying uh, issue involved over parks and funding that Heather was talking about. Um, say the tree guards, some tree guards may just leave repairs if they are there. Uh, but I know one of the big problems with parks, I don't know how we write the city to ensure it. Is that we, they get the budget request and oftentimes they get the budget. But they may redirect funding for a C B nine, that's happened a number of times. From C B nine to somewhere in Queens or Brooklyn or the Bronx. Not that they don't need it, but it's earmarked, there is specifically, and that's been a problem for years.
Yeah.
So I don't know how we underwrite, because inevitably the funding will come to parks. Because it's always written where, you know, it's, it's needed. Uh, the only funding I know that uh, was kind of denied and had to delay were repair of the steps at St. Nicholas Park. But otherwise we get the funding, but then. Uh, this director will just invariably promise something to somebody else in another borough. Or in the same.
Each borough has a borough commissioner like D O T, Fox and the borough commissioners. So we need to press upon them to make sure.
Really have to do that.
Yeah.
Funding will come in, I, I've sat on the fringe, not for, uh. See, you had a, uh, operations committee connected to parks. And we would listen to that, you know, all this funding going elsewhere, people would complain, but you would make some rationale.
Do we have a relationship with our local person?
Fox, uh, Commissioner?
No.
Fox has a problem. We did when it was Castro.
Yeah.
But Castro has since been, he's retired.
Okay.
I haven't even met.
Perez.
All right, Castro, Chris, he's very involved.
Manhattan Parks Commissioner.
I think it's Perez, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's not as approachable, and I could be wrong, but not as Castro was.
But we gotta do something about that, because funding does come into parks, but it gets redirected just on a whim. Somebody's interest in someone else having it. Or maybe if we suit them for, for the Paris money, we'll get. I'm sure they say they probably have. Because, because they've got millions, that one, that was not a room, sure, they got. They get the money. But son, I think our issue is beyond funding.
They spend, they do anything south of a hundred and ten. And it's also, I tell everyone, it's power numbers. We have to call three one one and complain because they look at the stats. Every meeting that I have on the cabinet level, the representative give the stats for the district.
Oh, yeah.
So you have to call three one one and urge your neighbors to call three one one, it's power number. Because the board can say it, but it was like, you're asking for it, but we don't see it in the note, don't tell me to ask.
Yeah.
You know what?
I also received a request for someone requesting a study for um, to narrow the entrance at Saint Clair Place to the Henry Hudson Parkway southbound. To one lane from the current two and add that space for widening the adjacent greenway.
Karen, where?
Same as I, I personally do not approve in an economic development, because that's an area where you've got the new one, new campus, you've got all the. This is essentially unchallenged, uh, you're going to travel next page to north and then which you go. All by.
Fifty eighth street.
They're, they're asking for a study.
That would be a lot of emissions from the vehicles.
Right.
Now, what are they asking for?
A study to narrow the entrance at Saint Clair Place to the Henry Hudson Parkway southbound to one lane. From the current two lanes and add that space for widening the adjacent greenway.
That's an invite that will impact.
It's south.
Sound one.
Is it two lane?
That's marginal, right?
That's crazy.
That's marginal street? That's.
Yeah.
Right down.
Okay.
Saint Clair Place to the Henry Hudson Park.
No, no, it's Saint Clair's place in marginal where they come.
Saint Clair is running this way, they're talking about.
The east west and marginal stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Come out boy.
It's going to impact. Either way, it's going to be an impact.
It's too much, it's already a lot of traffic.
Yeah, and either way, it's going to be an impact.
They could watch, and they were moving to get off the highway. I'm sure.
Besides, the study they did on Riverside, it said there's no traffic, so they.
They're getting on on it.
I'm sorry?
The request is getting on the Henry Hudson Parkway.
No, she's.
Getting off.
She said getting off.
Getting.
No, getting on, but no, it's just confused because I would have assumed that people take marginal.
You take, you take marginal to the two lanes.
Two different ways, look, I draw that way, but either way, I'll draw that way every day, it's just.
Especially if you're not supporting you with a one hundred and twenty fifth street hitting it?
No.
I mean, I'll, I'll write it under notes.
I, I'm, I'm just relaying the, the notes that I received from people.
Thank you.
Don't do the method.
We're not.
No, well.
We're not saying no, but we're just.
I hear you.
That we need, exactly.
At the.
Again, they want to replace it with.
Wider. Wide sidewalk, wide street.
Yeah.
Uh, they, they want to replace it with, I guess, more greenway, um.
Bike lanes.
But again, that's marginal, that's not.
What, more greenway?
I made the request.
Now with.
So.
So the point of it is to currently, you take marginal to Saint Clair, not where you cross Saint Clair.
It's at Saint Clair, you cross Saint Clair.
You take marginal to the two lanes, it narrows to one lane. So basically what you've got is, it's a, if you have a lot of cars there, it becomes a parking lot. So if there's no cars, you've got two lanes there are pretty much empty.
But there are always cars there.
Not always, no, no.
Coming up, where, where do you have these cars at? Tell me again.
The, the cars are marginal. There's a, I don't know, there's a couple.
They come out.
Top lane.
Down there.
And they're going south, they're going south on marginal.
Yeah.
And then they want to get onto the Henry Hudson Parkway. And you take on a entrance on Saint Clair.
Yeah. And what lane do you want to get rid of?
It's true.
No, no, yeah, okay, okay, so on the screen, you've got two southbound lanes on marginal.
They, they said southbound, they want one southbound lane instead of two.
Not on marginal.
On Saint Clair.
Other way, but. No, the entrance, the entrance ramp to the Henry Hudson Parkway. About sure.
Why do you, you want to, you want to narrow the ramp?
They want to narrow.
Take out the ramp.
Yeah.
They want to widen the adjacent greenway.
So what are they trying to do, Barry?
They want to narrow.
I want to see on the illustration.
Yeah, they, they want to reduce two lanes to one so that they can widen the adjacent greenway on the southbound side.
So basically shave off the western portion of the ramp and widen the greenway.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I may rewrite that.
Okay, so they're talking on the south side, underneath where the stairs would go up, a lot. Know that area, right?
I know exactly where they, if you come off and return it and, and you look to the back and see the stairs going up to the other side, driving, they go north.
They're going to be coming around on um, not marginal, what's the name of that? With a college that.
All right, now what I've written makes a little more sense. So study to reevaluate the reduction of the wooden southbound ramp to nine A down to one lane to allow widening of the adjacent greenway. And leaving Saint Clair Place out of it.
What remains negative though to that?
The negative is one lane with a lot of cars congestion and congested.
It sounds like.
Yeah, that's the negative.
I'm not sure if we should support.
Especially, forget anything you're saying now, deal with what is currently being built there. Which is the rest of the Manhattanville campus. Which will go, that, well, that's the street they're talking on.
That's on the other side of.
Of south?
Highway.
Or north, they're going either way, that it would affect anything going north or south, are they saying south?
They're saying the southbound ramp. Where marginal leans on to, leads on to nine A.
I know it's an on ramp.
Because you've got, you've got the Hudson River Greenway there and you're stuck, it narrows down. Plus, you've got a metal fence on one side, and the other side you've got the concrete wall. So, and you've got walkers going up there, you've got.
You know.
It's a little bit up, there's a whole big park.
And then you've got bicyclists, it's, it's crazy, it's totally crazy.
Yeah, no, it narrows right there.
Yes. It's the same way when you can't take the bike lane.
Greenway, greenway narrows.
People, in case, many of them do you see riding that?
I know.
And, and the greenway sometimes parks closes the greenway for the south. If that was wider, it would allow people to exit off easier of the line and use it. And park could do the detour at hundred seventeen. Better.
Noted. Uh. I've got a reading.
The visuals are great, Barry.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, being able to see it, thank you.
Yeah.
So maybe the study will show the negatives that they're just asking for.
Well, I know what they're saying to blue light, but that's.
They're probably asking for.
Do the study, so they just do it.
Which.
So maybe it's hard to do a study to confirm what we think.
No, it doesn't hurt to do the study, the study is welcome, but we know the outcome.
While they're asking for a study, and I can see that.
But as Michael said, we should watch the prioritization. Because with the budget cuts.
Right.
Yeah, we have to be realistic.
Obviously. I was being. Columbia can do the study.
Yes, that's a great idea.
Columbia can do the study.
Say that again.
I said Columbia can do the study.
The, the other note I would give is, you know, given Michael's point. In that we are likely facing. A budget cut environment after really not since, not having a budget cut environment since twenty twelve, you, when was the last time we had a budget? It's been a long time since the city had to cut the budget, um.
Oh, the city budget?
Yeah, yeah, um, so. In that mode, I think traditionally we work on prioritizing what we want to preserve, and that's less true for capital projects. Because those. Have a different money flow.
We're forced to consider what we absolutely need.
Hi, I also wanted to ask a question, I, you know, forgive me if this is silly, but I was curious if any of the capital monies could be applied towards like H D F C grants for capital related expenses? Like, is that a possibility?
Um, so, I'm so glad you asked. I, um. what was the rank on this? Twenty-two was allocate funding for low interest loans for HDFCs and low modern income homeowners to use for repairs and still the upgrades.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I think that was, that's exactly it. And, and again, I'm thinking of the housing crisis and also protecting, you know, but the most like unique things that we have in this district is just a ton of HDFCs.
Oh, speaking of which, Michael Palma suggested something which is related. I think it's an expense though, which was funding for additional NYC accelerator services for HDFCs. Funding for additional. To. To some state law with local law ninety-seven. Local law ninety-seven is the carbon emission reduction one for buildings. And Michael said that, you know, HDFCs can access special programs to comply with local law ninety-seven, but the accelerator, which is the hub that the city has to help with compliance is overwhelmed.
Awesome.
Michael Paul. Note, good flag.
Have you had small property owners to that too, the HDFCs? Thanks.
It's a little bit funded. So for that, it will be increased funding for. What, how would?
Yes.
What are we doing?
So they, they have a staff right now. And so we would be increasing their staff budget line for the NYC accelerator.
And that will be VP, HPD.
I don't know who the accelerator is on.
Or DEP?
Maybe DOB.
DOB, oh.
Might be. I don't know.
DOB and the committee and.
I have a question for the committee co-chairs. Does anyone know of any capital projects that got funded and that we can take off?
Libraries.
Major.
So maybe we can go through some of the specific ones. Are there still needs for laptops and wifi in schools or did they get every, all of that equipment that they needed?
I know the majority of it was funded, but we're still following up.
Okay. I'll leave it for now. Well, Bunchy Campus. They not, they didn't do any street safety upgrades at one twentieth and Broadway, did they use that? Those are, did we, did they do any street safety upgrades on one twentieth and Broadway on the Riverside side of Broadway? That's on here. Marine Transfer. Did the playground at one thirty-third and Saint Nick get upgraded?
It was partial, it was partially funded. That won't, well, that's the rebuilding. Well, let's see. Oh, wait, wait. Let me double check. No, I'm looking at something else. The stairs at one thirty-third.
No, neither project of neither priority has gotten anything.
No. Um, no.
So this is the staircase. This has not been funded.
It has not.
God, I don't think this got funded. Did the technology upgrades at PS or MS five one four get, get done?
I'm sure. We're still working.
Yeah.
We need a shuttle list though.
This is part of the subject in part.
Yeah.
I don't recall any, because I get them from O and B. I don't recall any from parks funding.
So one forty-eight street steps in Riverside that I know is not.
That was done?
No.
No request elected officials.
Was this, um, the Hamilton Playground wasn't renovated? I feel like I saw that. Maybe not.
The Jacob Schiff seating.
No, Hamilton Playground on like one forty or one forty, one forty-first in Hamilton Place?
I don't recall that.
Uh, Barry, this is a suggestion. Maybe we should look through the, the website for uh, through NYC dot gov and just go through, we should look at the different categories here to see whether or not we can cover any, which website? I believe it's New York City Council. So that's through. Oh, that's, that's a different. That's just, that's Schedule A money. That's. Right. Okay. That's, yeah, that's city council discretionary.
The responses was included in that package.
Yes. Well, but to Michael's point, it may have been directed funding. Um, I know what I'm trying to think of.
What about the Sheltering Arms Pool Deck located at Amsterdam and West One Twenty-Ninth? I think that's funded for twenty twenty-four. With construction to start next spring or next fall?
That's correct, Heather.
Um, I'm not seeing that.
It wasn't on the list, but.
So they funded it, but it wasn't on our list.
But it's, it's funded for twenty twenty-four.
You know what? I know.
One twenty-nine in Amsterdam? One side of that is from Manhattan, behind the other side. Based on the bus.
No, it's between Amsterdam and Convent.
Oh.
It's, it's mid-block.
You keep saying the avenue. I'm on the avenue. Cause in between, say between, cause I know it's on the avenue.
It's a small area.
No one ever looks at the links I send out.
I looked at the links.
So this is a brother and sister soul. Alexander Hamilton Playground. Planned commitments, one point three five five million dollars that hasn't been completed, hasn't?
Barry, it's on the, on the parks website. It's got an adjusted completion date for the basketball court reconstruction for February twenty twenty-four. So it's in process, but it's basketball courts. I don't know about if there was other things.
And that, that's for St. Nicholas or Hamilton?
That's Alex, no, that's the Hamilton Playground of the basketball courts that you were asking, somebody was asking about.
That's it. Yeah, that's right there.
All right. Is that what we were trying to get funded? Does anyone know from parks? That's the dog run. Why do they keep saying as of June twenty twenty-nine? All right. Any other things that may have been funded already?
Senior citizen, yeah. Senior citizen that funded.
Wilson Major Morris.
Yeah, I can check on that.
Did not. Um, this did get funded, but it's not anywhere near done. So I would leave it. This is the street collapse project on Fault Avenue. You figure they would take, they would get it done sooner, but it's been like six years since that collapsed. From one thirty-fifth to one thirty-eight. Right in front of Kukat.
I know where, yeah, they never, why they didn't finish that.
Complete rebuilding of stairs at one thirty-third, St. Nicholas Park. Did the George Bruce and Hamilton Grange libraries get their?
They did get some repairs. They got, they got their HVAC. They did, yeah, they got, they got their.
They always get their funding.
Yeah, they got them and. I don't know. We still have windows and stuff.
All right.
Twenty-six precinct, you have that. They got funded for their facade, HVAC and roof.
I think we might have known that. Oh, no, wait. Twenty-six. So just the twenty-sixth, though, not the three-oh.
Just the twenty-sixth.
Did we get a list of anything from the superintendents for the schools? For capital projects?
Might, yeah, Barry. We just literally got a list of the schools that we've been reaching out to.
We never do. If we get anything, it's from C E C.
Yeah.
Yeah. But the superintendent from five last year gave us a spreadsheet of their wish list.
I just got a list from C E C five today.
Okay, so, so. Except.
Let's go.
Do we wanna go through one through tens? So last year for number one, we had expanded affordable housing through all programs. The agency boilerplate was that, you know, like they will live on this with what they got. Number two was schools and students have been with wifi and laptops for remote teaching and learning. You don't, do we think that that's number two?
I don't think that's number two this year at all.
Um, okay, so.
Kids are back in school.
Capital. Um, put that down. She wanted just to. It did, and also remote learning is less.
Yeah.
Pressing. So then the next number two is the affordable housing and art space at thirty-five sixty Broadway, which is the RKO Hamilton Theater Project. Um, then number, the new number three would be uh, the, a new school building, which really is part of the CBA. But the, we, we had a meeting with them in March twenty twenty. It was like Superintendent Marisol someone.
Yeah.
Like the executive superintendent of Manhattan. You remember this?
We do. We, we met with superintendent as well as some other.
Yeah.
Shonika.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi. I don't remember who else was there at the meeting. It's in my email though. Um, I mean, I'm all for moving it from a number, what is it? Number two, number, number four?
It's now.
It's now number three. We still need this school.
Now, number three. That's my thing. We just, I would like to keep it somewhere kind of in the top something fifteen-ish because uh, my thought is when, let me not be negative. If it doesn't happen, I do want to be able to show some due diligence to the community that we have made an effort. There's other efforts that we need to make, obviously, but this is one step of many. And I want it to be something that is visible that we continue to make that effort to get it separate. So I realize, yeah, I was about to say, I realize that there are other, like I'm listening to the priorities and I'm like, you know, I'm not certain that this belongs right up there right now because there are other things that are really pressing. Um, but it's just important that it's visible and that we continue to fight for the space. Um, just kind of as making sure that we do our due diligence by our community. Um, but NYPD, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, we keep it within the top ten somewhere, even if it's ten.
I would love that. Yeah. Um, but I, like, again, I realize that there's a lot of capital requests right now. Um, the library has some requests. George Bruce keeps asking about that space. They want it to be renovated so they can use it, the outdoor space. So I would like to get that higher up on a list. It's, um, sorry, I know I'm, I'm. Yeah, it's number forty-seven.
The senior reading garden?
Well, they wanna use it not just for senior reading. They wanna use it for.
No, that's what it's supposed to be now.
Oh.
Functioning as such. It's the senior reading garden.
I didn't know that. They just said that it's not functional at all. Um, give me a second. Yeah, number forty-seven. Uh, so there's a couple of requests for libraries throughout this capital request. There's, um, one, two, three, four, five, six at least. And then there's numbers that we hadn't even prioritized. There are like two or three in the backend that we didn't even prioritize. So I would like to get library requests up in the top ten as well. I realized we asked about schools. Sorry. I've just been waiting patiently to save my fees. I'm going back on mute.
Did they request anything new of the libraries?
No. That we know.
Manhattanville, the, um, uh, how do you call librarian there? So she would get back to me, but she hasn't responded back to my email. So I'm waiting to hear back from her. No, well, George Bruce just mentioned that and Hamilton Grange hasn't had any update. They were very pleased. They still want to have a space developed for onsite training. But I feel like they know that they got a really big win with the HVAC, so they're kind of not maybe pressing as much. George, it might be George Bruce's turn to push for something. It's unfortunate that we have to pick and choose that way, but such is life. Oh, and so, so since nobody's speaking, I just wanna say real quick, uh, technology upgrades for schools seems to be kind of a big thing, but uh, haven't got an updated list on what's what, but I do know that I think it's PS one twenty-nine did get some uh, some supplies. I don't know to what extent, and if they still need, I still have to reach out. But so I think that that's one thing that might be off of our list. But again, like the library technology upgrade shows up on a capital request, one, two, three, four, four times, and then also library technology, so kind of five-ish times. So, uh, number two previously was number two about the technology upgrade. I'd like to keep that, but then envelop specific schools within that. Yeah, throughout the district. So we can get more specific. I know we don't have a lot of time, but Deidre and I can get more specific in a moment and the rest of Y L.
Yeah, no, the, the, I think that old item that was number two has been deprioritized. The one that you mentioned on PS one twenty-nine. Um, if that did get funded, because they, that was one of the ones, they must be C E C five, as we had that. Was provide funds to, no, I'm sorry.
There are C E C five.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Provide funding for equipment for acreage space or provide materials and technology upgrades for PS one twenty-nine.
So like I mentioned, I know they got something done, but I, again, I don't know to what extent. So I don't want to say that it's completely done and that we shouldn't include them. I know that it's been deprioritized, but there are still schools that are saying that their technology isn't up to date. It isn't up to par. So.
They gotta give us a wish list or a shopping list.
All right.
Otherwise we, it's hard to put it in a budget.
Let me just ask, isn't it a standard practice for schools to be painted on the inside, interior painting or cleaning on the inside? Do we see that kind of?
Well, they should be clean.
Clean.
That's a base line.
But not all of them. It's not standard for every summer that they get painted. But not all of them, it's not standard for every summer that they get painted, right, or is that part of the budget? Just as needed. Yeah, that I know. Know if there's any particular need, uh, physical facility needs among our schools that were not requested.
Do we want Laquita? Any of the three capital projects that you suggested for health?
They have some priorities.
Yeah.
I, yes, I don't know where, but I, uh, because I know it's going to happen in the spring, and, and all of this, as you know. It's kind of sprung upon the community, but they need help, funding help.
Which would be the bigger priority, heritage or M B O?
Uh, probably heritage, because. They have totally, and they are in process, process of upgrading their facilities, we understand they got some funding. For modernity update. Dentistry and ophthalmology and again, so. I would say heritage, and then secondly, uh, M B O and. I, I, I'm gonna check and see if Charles B. Randall moved anything, and uh, Elma here. But those are leading medical facilities in the area. And even though they're big, uh, they've had some pressure put on. I, I think in terms of ranking, though, just to repeat, heritage probably first. And then in the bowl and. And because they're moving into a city. Building, someone said something about, they're not even sure if the uh. Motivation has, but is motivation has happened yet at one thirty five?
That apparently is not a city building.
It's not?
It was leased by the city? But it's not owned by the city?
I understand that building leaves a lot, they're gonna be moving in there. But I, I can ask Mr. Jordan, you know, try to see what really is going on, of course, H A C is gonna cover some things, but. That is, we have to request them in breach. But I understand there's something, uh, they regard about mode. In that building, and I think that may take place uh, in the spring, early spring, so. And again, I'll check, uh, this week to see where I can find out about Philma here and Charles B. Randall. I'm sure if I'm missing, is there, uh, Monique, as you think, is there any other one that you talked about last night, but. I mean, and you said any other, yeah, healthcare facility, big facilities, our district anyway.
No, I think you discussed the Florida, Florida that comes to mind, right, in our district.
Any other of the prior or new capital items that should be pumped up to the top ten or near?
Um, I, I say D O T, the street ponding issues, flooding issues. Especially at the crosswalks. Um, I've brought this to the attention of Lyle, Blackwood on many occasions, um, and I'm going to say specifically. West one forty seventh street, the crosswalk, um. And west one forty, so one, west one forty seventh street and Saint Nicholas Avenue, street ponding at the crosswalks. And west one forty six and Convent Avenue.
And is that due to clogged storm?
Not due to clogged, um, case, catch basin, this is poor or incorrect street grading that needs to be corrected. Ponding at the crosswalks. And it's one forty seven and Saint Nicholas and one forty six and Convent.
Saint Nicholas Avenue or?
Saint Nicholas Avenue. It's, it's right at the subway. Southwest side of the street.
I think another priority, I don't know if it's capital funding or it's. You need, uh, really more garbage bins, we might talk about that. Uh, I think it's probably expense, but uh, in a way, that could be top, it says we're doing this rad bait, that we may as well vote full. Full steam to make sure we're tackling it all around.
Now, I was trying to see where.
Yeah, I agree, they need to remove all open wire. City trash cans and replace them with those metal, you know, cans that are. Covered. Primarily covered.
Didn't we just get a briefing from sanitation that they were doing that? On Broadway?
I believe so, I'm not.
The last meeting? The last general meeting, that they were gonna be rolling that out. Not the, not the. Carolyn, did we get a briefing that there would be new street bins?
We're moving street bins?
No.
Adding, they're replacing the wire ones with.
Baba at my cabinet meeting said that they have some for the entire city. But they haven't distributed them by the district. We're expecting some, we have been for over a year now, but they have not been distributed as just, but they have and should. Has to do with funding, so in other words, it is funded for us, funded for us to have, and we just need to have it. They're, they're being, um, distrib- distributed throughout the borough. So each board has their, um, sanitation district. District nine is cited to have the wire baskets, how many we're gonna get and where we're gonna get them, we don't know. But they do have the basket.
We don't want.
We're saying, uh. The waste buckets.
We don't want wire baskets, we want the ones that are rat proof and.
Right, the, the new ones, yeah. They're self-contained. It, it's the new ones that they're just, they're distributing, but they haven't given them out yet.
Okay.
The only one you said wire baskets, so they're saying no. Okay, so I didn't really mean wire baskets, the new baskets. So we don't have to move that up, that's something that's actively being worked on, we believe.
Um, this was on here from the first year of COVID.
Provide more what litter?
Yeah.
Remember they cut our basket collection?
They've cut, removed, yes.
And now they've restored it.
A lot of them weren't supposed to be there, they're on residential blocks. And the new superintendent said. That the previous superintendent let them remain, but they're not supposed to be there.
What residential blocks have wire baskets?
Gosh, I forget. Few locations that there weren't supposed to have the puking trash bins, I'll get to this thing from bottom.
Okay.
Cuz I'm thinking just on Broadway and Amsterdam alone, like.
No, those are commercial corridors, but there was blocks within the district that had the, um. The public trash cans, and they weren't supposed to, and they moved them. Because they were picking them up and, you know, with the collection, so. You have a superintendent, well, that will just wink by and just continue the pickups, and then you have one that'll go by the books. It's not supposed to be there, so they don't have to deploy service there.
Really?
Yeah. One will continue with what was been going on for so many years.
Right.
Then you get one that comes in and says no.
But that's just not logical to me, and there's, there's a need, so I'm trying to.
So if they're full, why remove them? Even if they're not supposed to be there, the baskets are continuously full when you pick them up, it's not like they're not being used, they are.
Right.
So, so.
The bigger, the only issue I know of with residential blocks that we really need them would be Riverside. Um, because not like most residential blocks. In that it's an avenue. And so, in particular, the dog waste. Um, and the park, you know, people eat in the park. Um, I know that's come up, but that's a separate conversation for uniform services and everything.
Right.
As opposed to a funding conversation.
Well, I mean. I don't know, I would say move it up, if we're doing a rad abatement, that goes in alignment, I think, in terms of supporting. That effort to reduce the rat population in our, our, um, C B. Ground made of string, you know, upgrade and.
This actually got funded.
Why the cans?
No, the community-based tenant protection.
Community-based tenant protection, um.
They, what is it called? They actually gave a name for it. Neighborhood partner, partners in preservation, there we go, wow. Um, so that did good find of, okay. In terms of expenses. We have our own budget as number one still. We have youth outreach with B Y C D. B Y C D says it's already been funded. I don't know, that's true. With then we have food. And anti-hunger efforts is number three. We have the cure violence initiative as number. Wait, what did I miss? Community board, youth outreach, food distribution, oh.
Library programs.
Yes, libraries.
Food distribution, the change of scenes, uh, we just.
Yeah, I said why? If the.
That, that includes like food pantries?
Yeah.
Okay.
But also meals on wheels, um, school, remember they have the. During the pandemic, they had the like free food for everybody. The lack for better, I forget the name of the program.
That's an effort, that's a top priority, barrow wide, cuz there's a lot of food insecurities, it's amazing.
The cure violence program, I do not think that got funded.
Which one?
Cure violence.
The mayor's office of criminal justice or gun violence, whatever it is, has a, um. Will fund certain. Outreach and violence interrupter services in areas that were hotspots for crime. We argued that one thirty fourth to one forty third between Saint Nicholas and Riverside. Was a hotspot, cuz it is, if you look at the data, um, that merited that, I don't think they funded one for there.
Oh.
Um, but you know, like Ayusha Seku's group.
Oh, that's the.
What is that called?
Resources.
Yeah, they, they're one of the violence interrupter groups. Um.
They're down in D ten, right?
Oh, and then.
They are ten, but.
One forty fifth down.
Yeah, well, they, they have the, they have the contract for the violence interrupter program for that kind of. Grouping of blocks in the west one thirties and C B ten.
Okay, yeah.
Um, so, school-wide resources pantry at P S M S one sixty one on Pedro Abiso campus. So that's school uniform, school supply, shoes and socks, et cetera, um, we have an agency response tonight, yeah. Um. Uh, increased funding for dedicated outreach personnel for consistent relationship, building outreach to homeless and communities, particularly with no staffing. To conduct daily outreach at hotspots in three block radius around Montefiore Park. Saint Nicholas and Jenny's Garden. Technical assistance to community board to H D F Cs. Um, this actually, we might wanna move to pass some manic funding. Because now that the, um.
Where do we wanna move it?
To, so. Now that the H D F C resource center is up and running. They could get council-directed money.
Okay.
And we wouldn't have to worry about O and B. Well, but the reason we could move it, oh, you're saying place it. Yeah, we're on expense.
Forgot the, uh, Montefiore.
No, we haven't forgotten, um. Well, we don't, I don't know what capital we need for that, I have an expense, the Montefiore Park one. Or, cuz it's programming, or do we need to build like a stage?
My need to do the stage.
Okay, um. Summer youth employment programs. No, there's no stairs on a floor. Summer youth employment could maybe get bumped up?
Yes, yes, yes.
Um, what was mentioned about increasing awareness in our community about the resources and things that are there? We need to do a better job, is, can we dedicate funds in some way for? More outreach, effective outreach to notify. People, uh, cuz it was mentioned about like migrants, but I mean, people who reside here don't know what's here either. So, some way, somehow, they increase our awareness. Um, that, that things aren't here, and they're here to support people, we talked about that with Laquita.
Cuz the services are there, we got a couple of them, like D O H M H has a number of programs.
Right.
But I think they need groups to sign up, to take all these courses and all these outreach programs that are available.
Yeah, I mean, like I said.
To be needing twice, they have all of this stuff, but they need more. Somehow it needs to be expanded.
Yeah, so.
They, they need increased staff.
Yeah.
They need increased staff.
So adding. Yeah, I was trying to see what we had categorized with that in mind, it needs to be redupped in a way. Because we have things here, and as Michael, Michael Wright was mentioning. Yeah, I mean, things are going to start looking dire as budgets are being cut, but we want to try to preserve what we have and maybe go any way to do that.
Some way.
To increase awareness of that is being utilized.
Right. They weren't, I didn't see them really out there. It seems as if we found out, say, about, you know, the incident of malaria that was in Queens. It's not that it's big, but people still need to be aware, and that came through another source above and from the city.
So, one would be Community Board Budgets, two would be DYCD Outreach, three would be Anti-Hunger Efforts, four would be Libraries. Five would be Summer Youth Employment, six would be the pantry at PS one sixty-one. Seven is Homelessness Outreach. Eight is the.
One second, Barry, and number seven, can you add to Montefiore Park the security guard station to be manned?
That would be a separate line item. Cause that's almost certainly gonna be heaven, right?
Yeah, they, someone was requesting funding for the Montefiore Park Security Guard Stations to be reopen slash personnel and even become a kiosk for the arts community to share information.
But the one that we were at in seven is the what's it called again? Consortium, Manhattan Outreach Consortium, the homelessness outreach. We have then cultural economic development services. Code Enforcement Personnel at HPD. Social Worker at MSHS three sixty-two. For Behavioral and Psychological Support Services. This is enforcement for S for illegal SRO prevention, I don't know if that could be tucked into those enforcement. Infant mortality reduction initiatives.
Oh, yeah, I would, I would have to move that.
Right, that's really on the rise, and it's interesting, on the rise, not only among African-American women, but Asian women.
What, what is?
And they, actually among all groups.
What is the status? What is the number for that one?
That was number thirteen. And they want to talk.
Yes, I'm sorry, what?
The agency wants to talk to us about it.
Oh.
Which agency? Oh, wants to talk to us, there was a message.
So there's the, so we have their contact info for their budget person.
And I think, maybe there should be a line in there, DOHMH.
Are we on the, are we the infant maternal?
Yeah.
Mortality?
Yes, that and maternal, yes, maternal mortality. Not only talking to women outreach to other women, but outreach to doctors because the problem seems to be the women not being believed, and doctors, physicians not being as aware that when a woman says something is going on, because it's not always an issue of poverty. You know, like, well, the classic examples, Serena Williams, and then this runner, Booley, a couple of months ago. There needs to be some kind of interaction with providers, physicians and providers, they're very important.
Got it. So we can. So you'll call, no, it's DOHMH, you'll call their budget rep about, there's, I'll give you the line and a number.
Okay.
Which is this.
What's the name? You have a name? I know Pauline Ferrante.
Oh, yes, I have Pauline.
Oh, did they take it off?
Is there someone else? Is it Kenneth Johnson?
Do you know, do you have the most recent register? Remember at the beginning of the register, it gives all of their contact info. Do you have the F Y twenty-four one handy? You have it. The name is.
Kenneth, well, that temporary.
Oh, okay.
Pauline is back.
I know, I'm in communication.
The name is I, Miss. Sure I butchered that. DOHMH Budget. Point of contact for health and medicine. Yes. Three, four, seven, three, nine, six, four, one, six, three.
And just spell the last thing, really.
A, J, A, I, Y, E, O, B, A. It's a lot of vowels. They need to lend some of those vowels.
Okay, okay.
Got it.
That's nice, okay.
Yeah, that's where it seems to be the most critical now, the decisions are ignoring. Well, and some things they're not ignoring, but they think that they know everything, not necessarily mean what. That's where it's breaking them.
They're trained and stuck.
So, fourteen was sanitation enforcement officers.
And we can make that include these food trucks that are
It's they, they do.
It is feeling to me. I'm not sure sanitation is also part of it.
Yeah, it's like move down the block.
They have the, don't they have that here to alternate zone? So that the sidewalk can be clean. So it should be two, then DOT and DOH?
Is that a budget priority though, or can we just talk to the agency?
Uh, we probably could just put it, yeah, maybe we just need to talk to the agency, yeah, that's not, it's not like a budget.
And then.
Right, right, I agree.
We have gun buybacks, you know, after fifteen, they start to stop paying attention.
So, we should bring the violence up somewhere, though.
Well, we have the Violence Interrupter one on. All right, and just checking capital again. We've got Fortal Housing, we've got the Archdale Hamilton, we've got the New School. They're gonna yell us about, we've got Angle Parking, is that still on the top ten?
No, parking period, not.
We, we wanted a street redesign of one twenty. East west of Broad, or west of Amsterdam.
Yeah.
T O, T O T have been doing the studies and Lyle comes back every time the end card does not see it. Isn't happening on one twenty.
They keep saying that, but we see it when we drive by, they don't see any cars.
Big car is still there.
They still there.
You, you, Teachers College, and then the. Uniforms, or, not Uniform Services, Union Theological Seminary.
Right.
I think.
That's a one twenty second. A divinity, it's something.
I know it's one twenty. The block is one twenty.
One twenty between Amsterdam. Sorry, is that one twenty and Broadway?
I'm sure we can do it.
Well, wait a minute, he wants angle parking between what, what?
We passed a resolution about it, he wants, he wants a street redesign for pedestrian safety at the crossings. And then he wants the parking switched to angle parking from parallel. Which makes sense, they do it, they do it between Amsterdam and Morning Side on that block. But also safer. We have senior housing, we have the study of the one thirty-fifth Street Marine Transfer Station. Build out a heritage healthcare space. Uh, funding for senior citizen home assistance program. Renovate Playground at one thirty-third and Saint Nicholas Avenue and Saint Nicholas Park.
Darren, can I ask you something, please? Do you want me to get an exact amount that you think here could be memorable when I?
It'd be helpful.
Okay.
But for conversations with them, it won't necessarily need to be before October thirty-first. Acquisition and reconstruction of Ellington Hotel as same gender loving LGBTQ housing. One eleven between Broadway and Riverside.
A hotel?
It's currently a hotel, I think the idea was to use state Honda housing our neighbors with dignity act.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's one eleven. It's six, ten, one eleven, six, ten, West one eleven.
So between Broadway and Riverside.
It was shut down as a shelter, they reopened it as a shelter. It's owned by Islam Lord. And the goal would have been to acquire and use it for housing for either homeless youth or LGBTQ seniors. Repair some renovations, till buildings. Reconstruct staircase in Saint Nicholas Park that runs east to west to one thirty-fourth Street, closed for more than a decade.
Right.
Funds to repair Hamilton Green Senior Center.
Just, I mean, just tell me that address on one eleven.
Six, ten. Hamilton Green Senior Center. Uh, no, it, well, it is a nonprofit that has a contract with DIF to operate the senior center.
Okay.
It is a separate nonprofit from its landlord, which is coming out of the Baptist Church. They were very good, I got to know them very well with the COVID vaccine site.
I mean, I know where they are, but I just always thought it was connected.
Start crying, that was a very ugly, dark time prior to here. And they really stepped up.
Yeah.
We have the equipment for the new design middle school, MS five and four, this did not get funded, or we don't know. New design middle school. Oh, right there. Across the street. On one thirty-third.
The school?
Under, under thirty-three, thirty-three. The land under thirty-three, thirty-three is owned by DOE.
What, this is funded?
Their entities.
It's supposed to go there.
They're saying that it's funded.
It was funded.
Oh, it was funded, fantastic. Let's knock it out. Literally across the state.
This introducing the idea, but, or I need to know where it falls. The mall, you know, street malls, like on the main avenue.
The Broadway malls.
I guess they're called the, the Broadway, yeah, and I think that's social society, not further it started. Who does that follow?
What was the question you're asking?
Well, I was thinking what would help unification, cleanliness, sanitation.
There's associated.
So I'd sit on the board of all the mall associations, and so they're looking for funding, yeah, so they're.
So that, cause we, that's something we probably really should look into, I think it'll make a major improvement. They would try, they would try over that.
You might do better with some getting someone to steward the particular areas, because the Broadway Mall Association I respect, was very slow.
Was very?
Very slowly.
Well, they've been, they've been, they don't work everything out, I know that they've.
And put them in the ground now.
Well, it's a whole base project about the soil and the water, but we just, you know, it's a whole.
You want something more.
So it's basically it's private, but, uh, private agencies that we would approach, not field, be necessary.
I think you see the council, I mean, they were looking to, they're looking to get parks, the park department. They're looking to come to CB to see what how we can help.
They can make a world.
Do they, do they have friends of?
Friends of the wars. There's a gala, there's a lot of benefactors.
Barry, since this place had been funded, can we move the.
My only hesitation is that, ah, ah. That they just did a huge renovation of Montefiore. Well, they might not be bullying.
Wait, they did, oh.
Grant, the good news is that the council member I believe funded through council manic money, the Grant Houses Playground. Well, unless that's the wrong playground, Grant Houses, I mean.
There's no discussion, actually, of Grant Houses in Manhattan.
Oh, yeah, I put the money from Manhattan. Nothing about that.
Yeah, but we have a, uh, talker, Zina, so you know about it, but.
Yeah.
And the windows.
No, I don't know. I'm telling you, I first signed it when I put the money.
Were you on the windows, twenty-eight thousand dollars?
Oh, wait a minute.
They did it already in their review.
MS one five three.
That's Manhattan, yes.
And new design middle school got their technology.
They did. My scope is now underway.
These are the council manic funding to Michael's point. Mostly schools.
And Barry, I'm probably pretty sure you're aware already, but uh, they have like an Excel spreadsheet for the expenses. So I was trying to go through at the same time.
Well, the, the expenses for a council manic expense funding?
Yes.
Yeah, those tend, some of those are like actually council direct, member directed, that they can go to anything. Others, there are certain council initiatives that members can push for organizations within their district to get part of the initiative money. So, the, a big one is CASA, which is the after-school arts programs, so you know, like council members will put in for schools to get CASA funding to fund after-school arts stuff. Or maybe it's just after-school activities. Are there any, so we've got these new capital items, we've got, we did the Heritage Health Build Out. We have the same thing for M V O, and that's not yet ranked. Jenny's Garden repairs, putting the retaining wall, Comfort Station at the Pierce Park. And then the street grading. We have to look about the trees to figure out. I think that's mostly expense.
The street frame will clear.
The one forty sixth and one forty seven.
Yeah.
Convent and Saint Nicholas respectively.
Jenny's Gardens, would that be a, a good request for the participatory budget?
Yes.
Million dollars? So we, we need to direct folks there because they take a vote on it. And that could be one of the things that we give bondage within the community.
Yeah.
And that, that the participatory budget is coming up. Yeah, it's just out today.
Yeah, we just thought of today.
The call for delegates or call.
Well, no, it's just advertising that they need folks interested from the ages of ten years old.
Yeah.
To adult, you know, to come and participate. So I was just wondering would that be a great request to submit? So we need to push that.
And I strongly encourage.
Direct people to that because Councilmember Bray's office just advertised it today.
Yeah, I strongly encourage from if they're in district seven.
The sixteen, yeah.
If they're in district seven to, into becoming involved just for budgeting either as a delegate or delegates reviewing. Applications for funding or just by submitting funding and then organizing your neighbors to support a particular project. Submitting a project, organizing your neighbors.
I think I just.
Uh.
Great, I'm, I'm.
Um, the Edgecombe Garden Stairs, um. And, and I see Nora, Nora Cole is on, but she didn't. I don't believe she's spoken.
Hi.
Edgecombe Garden Sanctuary.
These are just the staircase?
Yeah, they, they need, they need stairs to, to actually access that community garden.
How do they access it now?
Third line, so walk down the hill?
Yeah, yes. With, um, I guess some type of pavers. That are inadequate. It's very unsafe.
This is not the Sugar Hill one?
No.
Edgecombe is just a little further up. It's the pathway. And if it's on it, just be. And because it's on the hill. Um, it's a little challenging. So it needs. Yeah, it needs to be a little bit more accessible. Um, especially for people who, um, may have some medical mobility issues. So it would be nice to have some steps on that pathway, a handrail and all of that good stuff. But Nora is there. She can speak because they have a couple of things. Nora, go ahead. Thanks for being.
Thank you. Uh, we are Edgecombe Avenue Garden Park Sanctuary. We are a green thumb garden. We've been stewarding this garden since nineteen ninety seven. And it was originally an interim park created under Koch administration in the late seventies. And it was, uh, stewarded by a block association until it became defunct. And was abandoned and was overgrown for many years. Um, when we started working on it, it was actually still under HPD. We advocated to get it under, uh, Green Thumb, um. Original, uh, I can't show any pictures of it, but this is a big space. And from the street, it's located. I'm sorry.
It's located where?
It's located on Edgecombe Avenue at a hundred and forty ninth street, across from Jackie Robinson Park. And when you are on the street, because there is a, a steep grade up into the garden, you cannot see. All the way into the back of the garden and see how big this space is. There is a thirty by thirty foot asphalt piazza space. That has been there since the seventies. So the asphalt, buckley, it's a.
The asphalt also needs to be replaced.
Uh, and there are wooden benches that have been there since the seventies that, that's it. Um. So the grade doesn't leak, look as steep as it is. It has actually. Uh, lessened over the years with erosion and sinking, but. Originally, there was a stairway that led straight up from the gate, running gate. But the seniors could never use it because it was too steep. And by the time we came along, the stairs had rotted, the wood and concrete had crumbled and they were. We, um, got a grant to have them removed. So we created a path that goes around and up, as you can see. And every year we would weave that path, put down new weed block. And we've tried gravel, we've tried, uh, rubber pavers that we have now. We've tried mulch and where the grade is steepest, it never holds. So. It's about the design of it. And I'll interject here that in two thousand four. We, in two thousand three, we, uh, were selected by New Yorkers for Parks. Uh, for a community design program. We were given a Harvard Design Fellow that worked with us for ten weeks. To develop a design and budget for the renovation of this whole entire garden. After our presentation and budget to the community. Our city councilman at the time, Robert Jackson, told us to apply for his discretionary funds. His office approved capital funding of two hundred fifteen thousand dollars for the complete renovation. Unfortunately, the renovation was not approved by capital projects of parks and the funding was diverted. And used elsewhere.
Wow.
And advocated for this lost funding until two thousand ten without any success. So now thirteen years later. These benches, I mean, when we started, the wood, only the frames to the benches were there. And a few park personnel and some community person, pe- people, uh, uh, put the wood in on the frames. But that wood has rotted away now and the benches are encased in the asphalt. So they're not. You just can't, you know.
You gotta dig them out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Another.
So does.
This appropriation of tax funds is what you're saying.
Does the, does the redesign plan still, like, could that just be done? Is it still accurate or valid?
Yes, it would probably cost a lot more than it did then, uh, at that time. The, in two thousand four, the two hundred fifteen thousand dollars was going to cover the cost of the entire, the complete renovation.
So let's just say complete renovation that rather than staircase.
It included the path, the redesign of the pathway, the dealing with the asphalt, new benches, um. The, um, plants, um, that, uh, were appropriate for shade or sun. Um, all of that was taken into consideration.
And Jeanette and I both visited this, um, community garden. It's, it's in dire need of repair, restoration for safety reasons.
Got it.
And I will also say that we are in a catch twenty two position because Green Thumb. Has in the past year, past two seasons penalized us for. Um, not being able to have the kind of activities that we would like to have because there are safety issues. And there are, um, we are limited in the usage of the space because of. You know, because nothing has been done since the seventies to this space.
So what we're talking, this is another issue of misuse of funds by the tax department.
I know.
I knew Marita was gonna say that.
No, because I hate to tell you, but I'm here. I'd like to go home and I'm hungry. So let's move it.
Thank you. Um.
That's why I'm here. Let's move, y'all.
Are there any other additional capital items?
For our, our space? For the Edgecombe space?
For literally anyone.
For the Edgecombe space, tree pruning was also prime. We had a, we had a huge mulberry tree uprooted because of a storm and the ground got so saturated. It, it fell across the entire width of the garden and beyond and destroyed the fence. Um, and, and there are two trees remaining that are in dire need of proving and, uh, uh, pruning. And, um. Our safety issues also.
Oh, that's in the park.
Yes, but that wouldn't be capital. Um.
Something else, street going.
Did you say you had a bunch of capital projects?
Uh, I said, I had three.
They're all on.
Two, one was the name of the, like, I think Biden's been interested, but that sounds like a three little one. Complaints of parks, maintenance, then you can bring forestry in.
Yep.
And, and don't tell them that people will be hurt. Tell them cars will get crushed. They'll move faster.
Hmm, okay.
Let's do it, man.
Difference all these years. It, nothing we've said has. Has gotten through.
So.
Yeah, there's a lot of people on complaints.
Um. Are we, we're done with capital?
I think so.
Which means that we'll be done with, um, tonight's hearing, I think, unless there's.
There's one.
So.
We're not gonna.
So I know we're doing, uh, capital.
I was just gonna mention one other thing, uh, in my discussion with Monique. We talked about, uh, greater awareness. We can add into one of those awareness points cannabis. Even though it's been a DMs, you know that, but there are never things that require awareness. And, uh. Use of cannabis or the specs, uh, for others who are not using it, but you're using it cannabis. Anyways, basically awareness.
Uh, right, I just was trying to, to, to.
Outreach funding.
I, I think we were trying, we're trying outreach, getting out. Yeah, I was saying it would be part of the, just added in to one of those.
Outspan.
Uh, public outreach when we list on certain, uh, programming and documentation.
I mean.
It really could be part of the DOH, MH, um.
Rules and regulations for cannabis.
Yeah, but that.
Reserve in our meetings, there have been a lot, but not only health, but just, I think even in general.
But, but yeah, we were saying that that's like one of, of, of several things that we need to increase awareness of. And around in the community. That's what I was asking or putting out there. What else? Uh, how would we frame it so that we are. Uh, uh, requesting funding so that we can increase awareness. Around resources and things in the community that aren't being utilized. Cause we were saying there are things that aren't being.
Well, what would you put in the money, Mike?
It could be pamphlets, it could be, uh, well, we don't spend money on kiosks, but they, uh.
Advertising.
Ad- advertising promotional like material.
Way that, my, one of the, uh, expense notes, I think is the last one under health and, um. It's smoking is part of it, um.
The, oh, the H, whatever.
Yeah.
I know.
It is the very last one under the specific need statement. Uh, that would.
You're talking about the narrative. Oh, well, hold on. Let's get back to the outreach. Michael, you were saying something?
Yeah, so like I mentioned during the Economic Development Board meeting. I think social media is probably a pretty viable option. Uh, it's gonna be cheap. It's gonna reach a lot of people. Everyone has a cell phone. Uh, so ideally trying to, uh, do outreach through social media, I think would be. Uh, the next logical step that community board.
Enter the increasing times for.
And also making sure that people are aware of, uh, some of the opportunities, like we talked about asylum, right? Like, that could be posted on a story or. You know, post on Facebook, whatever it is.
In addition.
What for, FYI, for your information, that, 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 that. And it can be in English and Spanish.
Right.
Without four hundred words, this is what I need you to know. For your information, bam.
Of social media. Yeah, so I like that. Funding, I don't know who that is falls on, but, you know, increasing awareness and doing it in a very concerted. Um, thoughtful way so that we're getting the information out there to people.
To the people who need it the most. That's right.
Right.
It's, it falls under create or promote programs for education awareness on preventing chronic diseases including quitting smoking and nutrition physical activity. The cannabis.
And cannabis.
Right here. We have to mention it by word, I think, at this point. Right, cannabis. And then we explain it, then we do what Michael was saying in terms of, uh.
Social.
As well as what is already here.
Um. But you were saying something about general something before you got cut off. That was what it was about, the social media?
Oh, expense funding. Uh, so I know we were talking about capital funding, but. Uh, we kind of did skim over expense funding towards the end.
What is the number of expense priorities that were technically allowed? Do you remember?
Is it? Thirty five?
We just went, this is, uh, fifty one.
I was about to say in.
Some of those, no, for some of them, we just couldn't see us continue support.
Um.
I'll have to look at it, but.
I'll tell you.
We have a lot because a lot, some of them are continued support.
Right, yeah, I see that. There's, uh.
Mm-hmm.
There's like eight of them that are continued support and then that's under capital, uh.
We have it under expense.
We have an expense.
Oh, no.
Okay. But we have expenses. They do tell us. Um.
They got the very beginning. I don't know if you want it in here.
Or no?
Okay.
Um.
Well, Barry's moving that.
One, two, and forty five?
I don't know, we have fifty one on this.
Yeah, under, uh.
Man, I'm probably.
Forty four.
Um.
Under health?
Well, one of our items was prioritized.
Forty capital and twenty five expense.
So that's the cap for this year, very much.
Cap is a strong word, but OMD strongly encourages you to submit no more than forty capital and twenty five expense.
Oh, I mean, if it's very good. Fifty seven to fifty one, let's.
Yeah, we're not so limiting ourselves with this board. But. So these are all specific-ish. Things. Like lead testing. Enforcement on illegal deregulation of departments receiving tax credits. Pest control. Is there any other specific existing program? In a department under expense that we should be thinking about that we haven't?
I would just further mention on the educational section, uh. Uh, that yes, there should be an update to one of the. I, I, I don't know if it was under capital or under expenses as far as, hey, we need additional laptops or computers, but. Uh, perhaps we should just expand this to general funding, especially for, for example, teacher salaries. I remember when I was in high school. It's very important to have great teachers and being a teacher now is extremely difficult. Especially with the age of social media. Uh, so we should definitely be trying our best to support teachers. As they're going to be the, the biggest influence on the next generation. As they try to pursue careers or continue their education.
If I'm not mistaken, that falls under the DOE contract. Teachers are contract of the Department of Education. We, so what we could do is request that our legislators increase funding.
Well, we, I mean, we. What am I trying to say? Signals. Oh, my God.
Signal, what?
Why, hi? Like how we talked about maintain support for six day library service. We could put, maintain funding for teacher salary. We could put maintain funding for teacher salaries and support staff in New York City Public Schools.
Then under the explanation and, and what?
Yeah, I just wanna continue on to that point. I was thinking like, oh, what about the legislators? But the problem is right now with Congress, they can't even elect a Republican Speaker. And that guy Jim Jordan is very hard, right? He's not gonna negotiate anything.
No, 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 I saw people meant all.
Or just about the state legislature.
Yeah, okay, cause the state provides.
So Jim, he is the speaker?
No.
No, he, he tried to get nominated.
There is.
There's no speaker.
There's no speaker?
Yeah.
No, I thought they voted, no.
He dominated his voting.
It was seventeen votes short.
Oh.
They'll have it shorter.
It's dropping.
This next round.
Yeah.
It isn't looking good because there's a lot of bills waiting.
Surrounding this issue in the Middle East.
I think so.
That, that isn't looking good at all.
It depends on who you want to look at. Uh, go on side, yes again.
Getting the camera more and more off of them.
And, and.
Something about support. Yeah, in general, so that they can get.
Okay, y'all, we not gonna do this. I thought you said you was hungry.
We are.
I agree.
Okay, so. Yeah.
Any other questions? Any other item?
Did you finish my?
Yeah.
Okay. No, no, that. That we added? In terms of the school staff? Okay. I think that's it. So we got.
Air survey and, um.
That's still in the expense. Yeah, the air, the air model.
And I think they added, uh, there was something incorporated with noise. I'll find out what that is.
Oh, my gosh.
Something about. Yes, I did. I motioned that we conclude this meeting at nine oh five. Second.
I think it was well done. You buried for it.
First hearing, Deidre.
I think.